I'm doing it.
So you drew the story?
I have no issue.
You're sticking to it? Five, five, okay. Call a meeting to order for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025 at 6:00 PM. Do we have a quorum, Dina?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, we would like to have Judge Roy Kirby come forward for our invocation and our pledge, please.
Could we please bow our heads? Heavenly Father, we are here to witness and celebrate the drawing together of all of these people in the running of our local government, our city government. Give us insight, give us patience, give us kindness, give us a spirit of cooperation. Thank you for your many blessings for everyone here tonight and for this wonderful town in which we live. God bless everyone. Thank you, Father. Please face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Roy. Okay, for comments, I wanted to mention that there's been a lot of negative feedback on the tree destruction for the line maintenance. I got some emails, got some pictures, and so I talked to our Encore leadership that we've had here meeting with us, and then I also got a call from our regional director. I had her meet me on site at the end of Squaw Creek so she could actually explain to me why they're taking down the trees to stumps instead of just trimming them. And so she explained why they're doing that, but I wanted her to see. Pictures, whoops, hello. Okay. And pictures showed her the pictures of what it looked like down on the creek before they actually cut the trees down to stumps. And so we looked up and down Squaw Creek to talk about that and told her if we need to, if we have enough citizens and their concern that we can put it on the next agenda to actually talk about that issue. So we'll see if we need to do that. Also, I wanted to read Isaiah 43:19. "Do not lose hope in times of trouble, for God is working in the unseen; His hand is steady and His timing is perfect in bringing good out of difficulties." One of our citizens sent me that. I love that and I wanted to say that.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Okay, and so, number one, I received a request from one of our city attorneys, Melissa Cranford. She wants to move Agenda Item 14 up on tonight's agenda. This item covers personnel matters related to the city manager's contract. Without objection from the council, I propose moving Item 14 before Item 2. Is the council okay with doing that? Do we have a motion that we can do that?
Actually, Mayor, I'd like to move four up before that for Judge Quisenberry. It's a short presentation on the bond. I know he's been in trial the last two days and he's doing this of his own accord in time right now.
Okay, so, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Okay, so we're shuffling. All right, hold on. So now what we're going to do is hear the presentation on proposed Parker County Judicial Facilities Bond. And so, instead of Councilman Gilliland, we're going to go straight to Judge Quisenberry. Thank you, Judge.
Is the city attorney here?
Judge?
Yes, sure.
Okay. He charges by the hour, so I'm gonna...
Thank you. You know how that works.
And I can, I can address the entire audience also. My name is Graham Quisenberry. I'm the presiding judge of the 415th District Court in Parker County. That court began operations in 2004, and it is the second district court that was created for Parker County. We have one other district court, which is the 43rd District Court, which is across the hall from me in the district court's building. The district court's building being essentially one block this side of the old courthouse on Fort Worth Highway. That is the retrofitted old post office that was converted to a court facility. It houses the two district courts, the district clerk, the district attorney fundamentally. And that's where our operations are right now. I'm, I'm here to talk to you about a bond proposal, which early voting commences on in a little less than a month. And the bond proposal, as I'm sure I don't have to tell some of y'all, is to allocate the money for the construction of a justice center as well as a jail expansion. This project took a lot of work. I was on, I was on a steering committee for this for a little over 18 months. We went all over the county, went to other counties, looked at other facilities, did all those kinds of things, trying to come up with a plan. I'll be real candid with you. For the better part of the last 20 years, I have been saying that we need to get ahead of the curve and build a justice center while we could afford to do that. And I saw that, that line of people coming at us from the east. And then, in the last few years, they came in from the west. And of course, we all are aware of our population growth. And where we are right now, and I'm, I'm really not being hyperbolic, in that we are not in a good place with regard to our facilities. Our facilities, what, facilities that aren't obsolete are lacking in space. We do not have a single square foot to put any additional court, court support, anything. It does not exist. Another thing that we have right now, which has kind of been a bad system for a while, is we have our courts scattered in several buildings. And so, the two district courts are in the old post office. One county court law is in the old courthouse, and another county court law is in the courthouse annex on Santa Fe. That's not a good situation to have them scattered out. What this contemplating, this bond contemplates is the construction of what we call a justice center. We could also call it a courthouse, really. And what the money would be used for is to build a ground-up facility with all the parking and all the, the modern things that are required by law as well as the things that we need as a practical matter. And so, it would take all of those courts that I just mentioned and put them in that one building. And then the, the county would then seek to sell off the facilities that we have now. I would, and that would, that would include the district court's building. We would vacate the old courthouse with that trial court. It would still house the commissioners' court. We, we would be using it basically for a ceremonial-type facility. And then move to this new facility. The new facility would have not only the existing courts, but it would have room for courts to be created by the legislature. We are at the point right now, when the legislature meets again, we need to have at least one court created. We are running about one and a half times the average on our docket size right now. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that we're necessarily in a crisis on that, but the problem is, is several-fold because our docket management requires a lot of participants. One thing that we're kind of understaffed now is with the district attorney. We need more assistant district attorneys and so forth to handle a case load. I'm, I'm involved in a trial right now, which is continuing sexual assault on a child. There are a lot of pieces to go into that puzzle. And I have two pending death penalty capital murder cases that my courtroom and frankly, our courthouse, our district court's building is inadequate to handle that. If we seat a jury in a death penalty case, we really don't have a place to do it. And so, that is a problem. I think overall, the more fundamental issue that I would stress to you is just the county population growth. If we do not get this done, I'm telling you, we will have a law enforcement problem. We will have a public safety problem. We will have a civil, civil justice problem because we just simply won't be able to handle the business. Now, the other thing that goes before the voters on two separate propositions on the ballot is the proposition for the expansion of the jail. And so, again, the court system and the jail go hand in hand. One thing, one thing I would emphasize about a jail is that it is a temporary stop for people going to court. Our jail is not a prison. Now, we can, we can confine people convicted of misdemeanor offenses to the county jail, but that only goes to a maximum of one year. So what I'm talking about here is a lot of people that are in our jail, and most of the people in our jail are charged with felony offenses. So that is the way station on the way to the penitentiary. And so, what you want to do is get people out of the jail because if they're in there, they're costing you money. And our, we are at capacity now. We have to send our inmates to other counties. We have contracts with other counties. I don't have to tell you, that's expensive. And so what we look to do is expand the jail to handle not only our caseload, but just the arrestees that are going to increase with our population growth. And, and I don't have to tell you this, of all of the developments going in and all the population growth that's going to occur. Now, Councilman Gilliland has some brochures here. I don't know if he passed them out, but those are available for y'all. They give you some numbers, some basic overview, and I won't repeat that. But I will tell you, we wanted to make sure that we got authorized for plenty of money to do this. Our intention is, is not to spend all that money if we can help it. I'm a taxpayer here. I don't want to pay for it and for anybody else, and it is expensive. But we wanted, we didn't want to undershoot on that. And so, that's number one. We have given very liberal estimates with regard to the tax impact that would occur. And so, we, we've aimed high on that. And, and so, from the information we have now, we've kind of given you a maximum tax impact. What we would anticipate as a practical matter, however, is with our population growth. And by the time that dirt gets turned on this, that we're going to have a lot more folks. And, and so, you drive down some of these roads and these developments are as far as you can see, and, and these people coming in, they're going to be taxpayers too. And so, we really kind of hope, and, and if things go the way we think they are right now, the tax impact will be lower than what it says on the brochure. But, but nevertheless, we want to have plenty of money to do what we've done. Just to illustrate the point, the only building we have in this county that was built specifically to be a courthouse was built in the 18th. Okay, so, we don't have a purpose-built courthouse since that time. And, and I would tell you this, I say I'm a taxpayer, I pay for it too. And by the time all this gets done, y'all know how long these projects take. You know, if I sent it, if I personally sent it at all, it won't be for long probably because I've been on the bench, this is my 30th year on the bench. And so, this is a building for somebody else, it's not about me. And, and really, again, not to be hyperbolic, if this does not get done, as a resident of this county, I'm worried about public safety. I am. And it's been too long, even getting this going now, we need to get it, get it going and get it built. And inevitably, the question is, where's that going to be? Well, we can't tell you right now. We have selected places, and this is part of what the committee covered. But as you might imagine, we don't want to shoot our mouth off and something go wrong. And of course, we do not want to affect the property acquisition. And so, we feel pretty good about a location. We feel really good about a location, frankly, and, and think that's not going to be a problem. But we just can't reveal that at this time. So, that's, that's kind of the spiel. I could talk a lot more. I, I like what I do. Obviously, I wouldn't have been doing it this long. And I, and I'm passionate on the issue because people live here for a reason. And people live here for our culture. And you can, you can go to the Tarrant County Jail and talk to the inmates in there, and they will tell you, they don't really want to come to Parker County because our, our philosophy has been personal accountability. And so, we want to keep that going and keep this to be a good place to live. So that's the spiel. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take them, but if you've got other business, and this guy's charging by the hour, so, so I... Anybody want to ask anything, I'm available.
Thank you, Judge Quisenberry.
Councilman Gilliland, if you'll be kind enough to get those passed out, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, we'll try this again. Melissa Cranford wants us to move 14 on tonight's agenda, the executive session, in front of two. So if the council does not have any objections...
Just to clarify, just 14?
Just 14.
And then we'll go back to executive again for the others?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just making sure.
Yes. Any objections? We're going to do, are you talking about comments? We're going to do comments after we do the executive session. We'll be right back. So I am going to, we're going to now discuss 14 as allowed under Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, Section 551.074, personnel matters. City manager, Brian Grimes. Employment agreement, severance agreement. The time now is 6:18, and we're going to executive session. Okay. We're going to reconvene. Oh, no, Scott. Uh-oh, hold on, sorry.
I just saw him drive off. No.
Right. Waiting on Scott. Here he comes. Okay, I'll do that again. We're reconvening in the open session. Counsel, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the settlement agreement with Brian Grimes as discussed in executive session and authorize the city attorneys to finalize the agreement.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We have two, three in favor, three in favor.
All opposed.
Okay, all opposed. Two. Okay, so it passes. All right. Thank you, Tom. Okay, at this time, the council will hear the public comments. So, first one up, I don't know if I'm saying the, not the name right. Whitney Wass? Is that right? Okay, come forward, Whitney.
Thank you. I'm going to read off of this so I get everything and can be respectful of everyone's time. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. I'm here tonight out of a lot of frustration, not just with Encore and their subcontractors, but with the complete lack of help and advocacy from the city on behalf of its residents. To be clear, I'm grateful for the electrical infrastructure that is being improved, but the way this project has been handled is completely unacceptable. This summer, Encore accessed our property not through the dedicated utility easement, but by driving through our yard. They left deep ruts, damaged our driveway, and potentially damaged septic lines. They littered our property with large wires and bolts, one of which my husband ran over with our zero turn, which damaged the blades and could have caused serious injury. We contacted the city for help. We're copied in an email with a local Encore rep, submitted a claim, as they say to do at the end of July, and that claim is still unresolved. When we asked city staff for help again, I was told we would need to submit an open records request to get the contact information for the subcontractor. My last email to city staff indicated a lack of response from Encore, and I've still not received a response to that email. Subcontractors have repeatedly entered our property without notice. We have found their large trucks and equipment parked in our yard, under our trees, and most recently, they cut down a significant amount of our back tree line, which consists of over 200 yards of trees and brush that provided an important privacy barrier between our property and our neighbors behind us. That entire section is decimated. Sadly, many of these were mature trees, and according to Encore's own published standards on their website, this work was not compliant. And even after I was promised no more work until a meeting was held with someone from their vegetation management team, crews were back the very next day on our property. This meeting was not made possible by our city helping us, but rather a family member's contact with the utility company. We called the non-emergency police number to report trespassing as they again accessed our property outside of the utility easement. The officer told me there was nothing he could do. He was kind enough to try and come to City Hall and find some answers and get us some help, but ultimately came back to tell me the same thing I was already sure of. The city, there was nothing the city would do to help us. There's been zero communication with residents from Encore, which is something they themselves promised per their website. Contractors are entering private property outside of the dedicated utility easements and causing significant damage. City staff have offered zero advocacy. Public service means serving the public, but my husband and I have been left on our own to try to deal with this. Willow Park is even a member of the Steering Committee of Cities served by Encore, a coalition of more than 100 cities whose sole purpose is to advocate for their electricity consumers. To shrug this off as just an Encore project is frustrating when the city is literally part of an organization designed to give us a voice. If this were a one-off issue, I might chalk it up to a complicated situation with Encore, but unfortunately, the city's lack of responsiveness is a pattern. Another example, for over a month, our cul-de-sac had a steady water leak. My neighbors and I called multiple times, and one even came to City Hall in person. I personally reported changes in my water quality. It was cloudy, and I had a strong chlorine taste. The city's response was that I had air in our lines. When work was finally done to repair the leak, a large hole was left behind. That hole is still there today. And while it sat untouched, another crew repaved the front section of the cul-de-sac. Why wasn't the existing hole addressed at the same time? Why was there no coordination? And why was there no follow-up with residents who raised repeated concerns? These are not isolated issues. They show a pattern, lack of communication, lack of accountability, and lack of advocacy for the very residents that you're here to represent. At this point, it's not just about Encore. It's about whether Willow Park's leadership and staff are willing to stand up for residents when there's a problem, or whether the default response will continue to be silence and excuses. I'm here tonight because I believe residents deserve better. We deserve communication, advocacy, and accountability. That is the bare minimum of what a city government should provide. Thank you.
Hey, what was the address? I didn't catch that.
103 Crested Butte Court. I welcome you to come look at our back tree line.
Thank you, Whitney.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask a question, when you met with Encore, did they give a reasoning of taking the trees all the way down?
Yes, they said their, instead of just trimming to the lines, which is what I asked, why are we not just trimming around them? Why are we taking these trees all the way down to the ground? And they said that is, that is what they're told to do. If it's under a line, they can take them all the way down to the ground. And so, my suggestion is, I think that, and they're willing to, any of them come. I, I told them that, because I have been contacted and, and a lot of unhappy people, I mean, you can't, you can't put a tree back. A tree's gone. And so, I suggested that, at one point, I asked them to halt. Just stop. Please just stop. And I had two of them say, okay, we'll stop until we meet. But then, when meeting with the regional director, Holly Radar, she is like, we cannot stop. It's not an option to stop. So the only thing I can think of is, and I asked them, would y'all come to the next meeting? If I put it on the agenda, would y'all come and address it? Because we couldn't put it on tonight's agenda. But that leaves us until next meeting, which is October 14th. They can do a whole lot of trees down between now and then. But I don't see another way, another avenue, because I had her come in person, which she did. And she brought one of her, her other, the guys that was below her. I mean, they're willing to come and willing to talk, but I don't see that they're willing to stop. And, you know, with their mandate, this is what we were told to do, this is what we're going to do. I don't see what options we have to stop Encore at this point. And I totally agree, because when I drove down there the night before they came out and had pictures that citizens supplied to me, this is a creek and beautiful trees everywhere. And then they're chopped totally down. I mean, and one of them looked like a 100-year-old tree that's just gone, and they're just totally clearing it. That's exactly where we met. But me asking them to stop did not help us at all. They are not willing to stop at all until the next meeting. So I don't know if we have any options. If y'all can come up with one, that'd be great. Other than them coming to talk and repeat what she told me, I don't know if y'all have suggestions or not. What do y'all think?
Whitney, I'm so sorry, Roland, right? What was your, I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Uh, Wass, Whitney Wass.
Wass. The, the trees that they cut down, I'm assuming are obviously in the easement piece, but how they gained access to...
Access is a problem.
Yeah.
So by law, they should only be accessing that through the utility easement.
Correct.
Unless they got a temporary permit to access it, because they knew it was a temporary easement.
Yeah, or your acceptance to...
Correct, which is not through my front yard.
Correct.
Um, the trees, the gentleman who did come out to meet with me said that, because if you look at Encore standards, which is regulated by, say, it's a Texas State Utility Board that helps set those standards, and they kind of follow the federal... that helps set those standards, and they kind of follow the federal standards, the only part where they're clearing completely sections down to the ground of 10 feet should be around transmission lines, which are the giant power poles. Those are not just the distribution lines that are typically on people's personal property.
Right.
So they really couldn't give me a great answer as to why they're not even following the own standards that they have published on their website. So they, which, our property had way more than 10 feet around it, but some poles got to keep trees, like one right behind us, some didn't. Most of ours were decimated, so.
And, and do you have a fence line, I'm assuming, on that back fence line where they cut them down, or?
There's part of an old fence line. It was so thick through there, you couldn't even hear, like, I've never even been through there because it was, there's vines, there's trees, there's bushes, there's all, I mean, you couldn't get through there.
But on your property?
Correct.
That's right, okay.
Yep.
Sorry that happened.
Thank you. So I think, I don't know if requiring Encore to get a temporary easement would be a good place to start, because they are accessing it in a way that is technically illegal. They should not be driving through my property. They've been parked under my trees, they're taking lunch in my front yard, that's not okay. So that's way out of the scope of what they're allowed to be doing on my private property.
Agreed.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we have Randy Keck.
Good evening. My name is Randy Keck. I live at 428 Baton Drive in Alito. I'm the owner and publisher of the Community News. I'm here because on July 28th, at the Willow Park City Council meeting, there was a request for qual, request for quotation for a new city attorney that was placed into the council packet evidently at the last minute before the meeting was held. One of the city council members that night asked the mayor where it came from, and you did not answer. So I reached out to city staff through the Open Records Act and asked where it came from, and nobody on the city staff knew where it came from. So I reached out by email to the mayor about probably five or six weeks ago, submitting an open records request of where this came from, and there's not been an answer. So then last week, I sent another email to the mayor's address, and there has not been any kind of response. I'll let you know why this is important. I want to know who, who wrote it, and I want to know when it was written. And these are important because it appeared to have been written at a time when it would appear that whoever wrote it was planning on getting rid of the city attorney even way before the city attorney resigned. The other reason it's important to know who wrote this is, was it written by an attorney? If it was written by an attorney, who paid the attorney? Was city money used to pay, pay the attorney? We don't know the answer to that. Was it written by a cut-and-pay-to-paste artist that found, you know, this kind of information and just, you know, put something together? In any event, I think the taxpayers of Willow Park deserve to know if the mayor, beg your pardon, but if, if the mayor is going to bring amateurs in to do the work of city staff, I feel that the city deserves to know where that came from. Thank you.
I have no idea what you're talking about. What are you saying? That someone wrote that they wanted the last city attorney gone, or what are you saying?
I'm saying that the, the request for qualifications that was handed out was dated in such a way that it appeared that whoever wrote it wanted the attorney gone, because it was literally right at the start of your term as mayor before Mr. Chesser submitted his resignation.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So you don't know where the request for qualifications that you put into the city council stacks came from?
No. The qualifications for the city attorney?
Yes.
No, there was no...
So you're saying you did not put a request for qualifications for a city attorney in the city council packets?
On what date?
The night of July 28th.
I'll have to go back and look and see on July 28th.
It's this.
That's the one, right there.
It's this.
Oh, the SGR. Is that the SGR?
No, it's RFQ.
Okay, we did go over that, yes. We did talk about...
But you're not gonna tell us who wrote it?
Why do you need, I know, I'm not gonna, no.
I feel it's pertinent information, is who's, who's writing this stuff that you're handing out to the city council?
I think that, that packet had been out, and it was submitted to me by a citizen, yes.
Okay, but you're not gonna tell us which citizen wrote it?
I don't know why you need to know that, no.
Let me just remind everyone that this is the public comment section, and although I, I give everybody a little rope, because I want them to air their grievances, what the council should do in response to these is recite existing fact, recite existing policy, or make provisions for the topic to be on the next agenda. So I think we're going a little beyond that now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Okay, so next we have Gene Martin.
That's a couple of tough acts to follow. I'm Gene Martin, and a resident of Willow Park for almost 38 years now. I wanted to come up tonight and say thank you, appreciate getting the road in front of my street finally, well, worked on. I guess the end, end game is it'll be paved, but I'll be honest with you, just getting the bladers, come out and level the thing, two cars can actually go in opposite directions, and it's great. So I appreciate that. I will say, that since it's flatter and the potholes are not evident anymore, I think the speed people go down that street now, they may be just trying to get ahead of the dust cloud. I'm a little concerned that when they actually put blacktop on there, that that, mm, approximate three-quarter mile long streetway, it may actually see some vehicles exceed 30 miles an hour. I don't like to predict things too often, but I'm thinking I'm gonna be safe on this one. And I don't want speed humps like to put on brown road. I don't think they were actually designed for 30 miles an hour. But I guess the good news is, like I said, I'm really glad that in April, the council decided to pave these roads instead of put a million dollars in the parking lot out front here, which just goes to show that maybe we do need a contested election every year in this city. Get a few things done. And, and that's the real reason I came up here, is that subject will actually be a point of discussion for the Home Rule Charter Commission tomorrow evening of what will be the terms of elected officials, when will we have elections, and that kind of thing. So anybody that wants to tune in and watch that scintillating entertainment, that'll be great. And I'll just say, I had a conversation with Clark Boeser this earlier today, and I'm going to try to get a town hall scheduled on the Home Rule Charter progress for mid-October and possibly mid-November. So I just thought I'd alert you to that goal. So, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Gene. Okay, next we have Bill Green.
Madam Mayor, City Council, good to see y'all. My name is Bill Green. I live at 224 Vista Drive. It's up in the Laguna Vista Estates. We're the forgotten part of Willow Park. We sit at the back, we sit up high, we have lousy roads, but I'm not here to talk about that right at the moment. I wasn't even gonna bring this up whenever I got here today and saw we had so many guests. It's something that probably ought to just be aired out amongst us, but I had too many people asking me questions about this, so I went and dug into some things. I'm a military man, 29 years. I was Navy intelligence, and a lot of my work was done through indications and warnings that come out in equal attempt, and then followed up by action. That's talking about our enemies on things like that. Now, a few weeks ago, right before our dear young lady died, Buddy and his wife were here, sitting back there in the back, and I was looking over at him, and I thought, you know, haven't seen him before, don't know who he is, so I was just kind of curious. Well, as, before the meeting got going, all of the city councilmen came up and talked to him, and shook his hand, and just made him welcome and all that, and I'm thinking, okay, here's an indication, something's about to happen. That drove up a warning in me, do some more digging, what's going on here? Well, Dixie passed away, and she was here, and there's pandemonium going everywhere, and we closed the meeting down, and we were standing out front after it was pretty much figured out that Dixie had passed away, and Sean came up and asked you to open the meeting up again, so that they could elect the new city councilman, or appoint the new city councilman. Well, at that time, we hadn't even had anybody interviewed for the city council meeting, so I don't know how that was gonna happen. Anyhow, wisely, that didn't happen. That was a good decision, I think. Anybody that, that could see the situation would see that. Whenever we did finally get around to that week, that we were going to appoint a new city councilman, I got to watching things, how it was going on, and three people were chosen, who by the council, one by the mayor, and who was gonna be interviewed, and Eric brought up the subject that while they're going to be sequestered back there, maybe they should leave their cell, cell phones here, so that nobody could call back there and tell them what the questions were that were coming from the council. That didn't happen. But, right there, we've got indications and warnings, why all of a sudden does that come up there? Now I'm getting to the meat of what was going on. Buddy came out first, and, believe me, I've researched Buddy, Buddy's an honorable man. He's lucky, we're lucky to have him here. He's had a great career, he's done an awful lot for people, he's done an awful lot for his family, and he's fixing to do an awful lot for Willow Park. But when the questions came after he gave out his qualifications and what he's done, Scott asked a question for him, it was very long and very involved, and when everybody got ready to answer, Buddy opened up his notebook. Buddy, I don't know whether you were or not, but I was sitting right over there and could see the whole thing, and it looked to me and sounded to me like you already had that question, so that you could put the answers together the right way that the council wanted to see it. Now, I'm not gonna ask for any clarification there. If I'm wrong, I'm wrong, but I need to be proved wrong. Anyhow, he did very well and wound up being put with the city council, and I'm sure he's gonna do very well. But you gotta understand, people, there's people watching every move you make. I'm an expert at it, and I'll claim to be an expert at it, and I'm gonna continue the watching. This is something that could have been avoided very easily just by going by the rules and letting Buddy come up, you know, if he, if he did already have the question and had the, had the opportunity, to come up off cuff on what he was gonna do, like the other two candidates had, on any time that we bring anybody else up whatsoever. Just a suggestion. Now, one other quick thing. The city attorney and the city manager, I notice they're always sitting up here where the council is. The council is elected. You guys are all elected, some are appointed, but you'll probably get reelected. It seems to me that the city manager and the council, I know they're here to answer questions that come up from the folks here, the council, but it seems to me like they would be better suited not being up here with elected officials, but in a place of their own over there where they, if they needed to talk back and forth, they could do it over something, but it would be out of the direct line of everybody that's up here that's elected. Just a suggestion, something to think about. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, next and last, we have Roy Kirbin, Judge Roy Kirbin.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, honored to be here tonight. Follow up on what Bill said, I thought he had the questions also, pretty obvious to me, and I too watch people very closely in the half for many, many years. Counsel, I want to put on the record that the comment made by Councilman Scott Smith was sexist and irrelevant to the candidate interview of Dr. Jeanette Kirbin. During the last council meeting, Councilman Scott Smith asked Dr. Kirbin if she was nervous. He did not ask that question of the other two male candidates. Sex-based harassment and demeaning language can amount to unlawful discrimination under federal guidance. Recent EEOC guidance, April 2024, updates how harassment is evaluated and enforced. See Foley Hope Plus 1. Also, you should reference the Texas Municipal League Code of Conduct. Under the United States Constitution, no religious test clause, Article 6, Clause 3, Torcasco versus Watkins, that's on point. Under the First Amendment Free Exercise Clause and Establishment Clause, under the Texas Constitution, Article 1, Section 4, religious tests, no religious test shall ever be required as a qualification to any public office if the question is not used in decision-making and for reasons of informing constituents and asked of all candidates equally. Councilman Sean Gilliland asked Dr. Kirbin of her religious practice. No other candidate was asked that question. So at this point, I'm going to make a request to the city of Willow Park, mayor and council members. The subject will be formal objection is to sexist remarks made by Councilman Scott Smith at a September 9, 2025 city council meeting. The council, when such remarks not only demean the candidate personally, but also have undermined public confidence in this governing body. I respectfully request that Councilman Smith issues a public apology. The remark is stricken from the official meeting record. The matter is referred to the appropriate ethics or conduct review process for this city. If there are no appropriate ethics or conduct review processes in this city, I formally request here be an item for it placed on the next agenda, and on all public servants be required to attend current classes offered for discrimination of any kind, so that this behavior never happens again in the city of Willow Park. Our citizens expect and deserve professional, respectful discourse from their elected representatives. Addressing this incident promptly and transparently is critical to maintaining trust in the Willow Park city government. Subject, formal objection to a religious affiliation remark made by council member Sean Gilliland on September 9, 2025 city council meeting. Dear Mayor Palmer and council members, I am admitting this written objection for the, for the record regarding remarks made by Councilman Sean Gilliland during the recent 9/19/25 city council meeting. His comment during the public candidate interview asked about Jeanette Kirbin's religious affiliation as a criteria for office. Her religious affiliations were irrelevant to the agenda item under discussion and contrary to what should be the council's code of conduct, requiring respectful treatment of all participants, requiring all implying religious affiliation as a criteria or suitability for office. Unconstitutional and ethical concern. Surprised you did that. One, I request to strike the comment from the record. Two, require a public withdrawal apology at the next council meeting. Three, refer this matter to the city's ethics review process, which we've already brought up, that the council leadership reaffirm its commitment to respectful discourse by reviewing, and if necessary, strengthening the city's code of conduct to explicitly prohibit sexist or discriminatory remarks. prohibit sexist or discriminatory remarks. I prepared this document and at this time, I would like to hand it over to all the city council members and the mayor, if I may approach.
Yes, please. Yes, please, yes.
Thank you.
Counsel? Mayor? Sir? 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 Would you like to go first? I'll finish it up by saying that, standing up here as a judge with many years' experience on the bench, that I was embarrassed and surprised by these statements. You might want to look at the United States Constitution, the Constitution of the state of Texas. There's a lot of information in there about this type of procedure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Judge Roy. Okay, thank you, everyone, for attending tonight and sharing your comments with us. We'll now hold a public hearing on the proposed 2025 through 2026 fiscal year budget. Those who want to speak, please step to the podium when your name is called and you will have five minutes to provide your feedback on the proposed budget. I don't think we have anyone that has, but I'm going to gavel in. I'll now open the public hearing at 7:55 PM. Is there anyone who wants to make public comments on the proposed budget? Okay, no one? All right, so I'm now close to the public hearing at 7:55. Thank you. All right, now, moving on to consent agenda for item two. We have city council meeting minutes provided for July 28th, August 5th, August 12th, and August 26th. The meeting minutes for July 28th have an error, so I recommend the removal of the minutes from the consent agenda. Is there such a request at this time to remove an item?
Did you want to be more specific on what it was you wanted removed?
The meeting minutes for item six regarding encore rate increase were incorrect. The motion made needs to be corrected to reflect the council's denial of encore rate increase. Resolution 2025 through 11 included in the July 28th council packet was not acted on or approved. So I have communicated this correction to Ms. McMullin. And so I'm looking for the council to get a motion to table this item until the minutes are corrected and can be reconsidered at a future meeting. So I went back and looked at them to be sure.
Sure.
Saw that. So I'm looking for a...
I can make a motion to table the minutes from the July 28th meeting until that can be looked at further and corrected.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
I can make a motion to approve the August 5th special called meeting minutes, the August 12th regular city council meeting minutes, and the August 26th special called meeting minutes as, or they're not special.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? So we'll move on to three. Regular agenda items, discussion and action presented by Jacob and Martin regarding the westward extension of Bankhead Highway from Clearfork to the Trinity River to east Bankhead Drive and possible action related to execution of a letter of intent with Alan R. Scott related to the construction of the extension and conveyance of the property for the right of way. I'd like to welcome Mr. Ryder Scott to the podium to provide comments on the letter of intent. Good evening and thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Ryder Scott. I'm currently a resident of Parker County, that is, this year. I moved over here from Dallas. I'm here to just offer you some brief comments about Bankhead Highway. So Bankhead Highway was, in fact, named for a United States Senator, John Hollis Bankhead from Alabama. And he was in the United States Congress and he passed in 1960 the Federal Aid Highway Act in 1960, first opportunity for the federal government to provide funding to the state. There wasn't a federal Department of Transportation. In fact, there wasn't a highway department in the state of Texas. And so the federal government required that for the state to receive the funds, they had to have a way department. So in 1970, legislation convened and we created the Texas Highway Department. The Bankhead Highway was then designated by the State Department of Highway as State Highway Number One in the state of Texas. It was the first all-weather transcontinental road paved that went from Washington, D.C. all the way to San Diego. Had a bunch of auto cars back then, and their purpose really was to get paving down so we could drive our new thing along. So Bankhead has been here since it was actually paved in the 20s. Texas has the most mileage of Bankhead Highway. They have 850 miles. It goes from Texaco, Dallas-Fort Worth, west Van Horn, and ultimately to El Paso. Interesting, the largest section of Bankhead Highway, named Bankhead Highway, currently in use in the United States, is right here in Parker County. So the problem became, how do you get down Bankhead Highway? Because you used to be able to go all the way from FN5 all the way to Fort Worth on Bankhead Highway. Well, my grandfather was very upset when the federal government came in and put in the interstate, took part of the farmway. But he was fine with Bankhead Highway because you could get on that all the way to Fort Worth. In 2016, which was the centennial creation of the authorization of Bankhead Highway, they had a caravan that traveled from Washington, D.C. all the way to San Diego, commemorative, old touring car. And I came back out here in 16, early in the morning, and they started over in Alito and they came down Bankhead Highway, traveling westbound. They came up to the interstate and had to stop. Interstate access road was one-way going east. But the DPS had cars out there to stop the traffic to allow the cars to go up the access road the wrong way, back on the existing western segment and continue all the way into Hudson Oaks and ultimately into Weatherford. That was really the point that I thought, you know, we need to do something about this because Bankhead Highway ought to be restored. You see the historic monuments out there. Texas named Bankhead Highway as a state historic highway in the state of Texas in 2009, but we can't go all the way through. So beginning in about 2016, we started to have conversations about how can we provide a link in Bankhead Highway? This is a community project. It's the city, it's the county, it's the state, it's Texas. It takes all of us to do this. And as we discussed it over the years, there's a bridge on Bankhead Highway, just right at, in fact, over the Clearfork of Trinity. And that bridge is no longer functional, it's been removed. The road is no longer in the Texas Highway system. So there's a bridge that has to be built in that area of Clearfork. And then there's a pavement that has to exist, and then, of course, you have to have the right of way. So discussions were had with the county, Pat Dean, and with Mike Hill, the county commissioner of Precinct Four, with Willow Park, with Alito, with others, the landowners to come up and plan. And over the ensuing years, and I didn't come back to her until, as I mentioned, 2025, sketches were made, and Derek can have a very nice presentation of the alignment to show council what it is. And the delegation of authority basically came out, county, can you build the bridge? City, Willow Park, can you build the roadway? And you, Mr. Landowner, would you mind donating the right of way so we can put the road and the bridge in play? You have in front of you a statement of intent. And discussions had been had, a copy of this was provided to the city, to the mayor, to the county, to the county commissioner to review and look at. I wrote it myself, I didn't get paid for it. And I'm providing it to the city, and that is essentially the reason is to give you a starting place to set down essentially what we've talked about, that the city would assume the responsibility of paving the structure. The county, in their 2023 bond package, had a line item that provided the funding to rebuild the bridge. That is under process, they've already retained an engineer to begin the structure. The county doesn't want to build a bridge if there's no road. The city doesn't want to go to the expense of building a road if there's no bridge. And I don't want to give a right of way if there's no bridge and no road. So this is kind of this very starting place that says we're going to divide the responsibilities of the various public and private entities. And that's what we have in the agenda tonight, and Derek's presentation is much better.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, we appreciate it. Okay, I'd like to welcome Mr. Derek Turner to come forward and give his presentation on the Bankhead Highway extension.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, evening, council. So Ryder did a very good job of setting this up ahead of me, but I was asked to look at the cost of the extension that he's talking about, basically from just east of the Clearfork all the way over to the west connection of Bankhead that he discussed. And so I think you've got it in your packet, we also have it on the screen, you'll see exhibits here in a minute. And we met with the county and discussed the project and their progress with the bridge. And during that discussion, essentially, I was asked to look at the cost of a full minor arterial extension, 36-foot wide, concrete street, meeting city standards from one end of that to the other, but also to look at the option of doing a partial build-out, a two-lane road, still concrete, meeting the city's standards for the same requirements. And so I did that, we looked at both options. The routing had been, I believe, the original routing that was laid out was done by, was done by Ryder's engineers or another engineering firm had laid out the route that we're looking at. And that's what you see in front of you if you have this copy in front of you as well. That's the 36-foot, the kind of the tan shade that you see is obviously the extension of the road, 36 feet wide with some offshoots tying in I-20 access road. And it would be curb and gutter, typical street section that you would see, according to city standards and drainage included. The next one, excuse me, go back one.
Sorry.
Yeah, the next one is the, it's the same alignment, it's just a partial segment showing a 24-foot wide road. That would basically look like one side curb and gutter, the other side would just be a plain-in concrete edge in anticipation of a future expansion on the other end. Which way you go with that, we'll talk about cost shortly, but which way you go with that really depends on where you think development is going. That's certainly going to be a developed area once this road goes in, and so there's some consideration that should go into whether you should go ahead and build out the full segment or not at this point. But that's a council decision. Do you want to go ahead and go on? So this is the estimate for the paving or the street project with the drainage that would be included and necessary for the street. As you see down at the bottom, that's $4.18 million, that includes all of the paving, the dirt work that would be required, which this particular estimate has a pretty significant amount of dirt work because we just don't know currently what's there. There's going to be a lot of river basin silt and things like that there that we're going to have to contend with. But I put enough money in the budget to cover that contingency and so, but you're looking at 4.18 on that estimate, if you want to go on to the next one. The next one you see is the estimate for the 24-foot section, the partial build-out. And as you can see, it's a little bit less, you're basically saving a little over a third of the concrete work. Everything else is pretty similar, as far as the dirt work and other aspects of it. But it's at 3.137. We were also asked to go ahead and include the utilities on this as well, which is the next slide. Water and sewer, eight-inch water line, eight-inch sewer line from one end to the other, essentially, tying in the Bankhead west side to the existing facilities. And if you look, if you notice back on that, on those exhibits, you can kind of see the cul-de-sac that Bankhead currently ends in. That's where we would be tying in all the pavement, water, and sewer. And so in this case, we can cross the river with the water, we can directionally bore under the river. We would have to do an aerial crossing of the sewer, which is not unusual. You'd cross along the side of the bridge, above the water line, in a casing, but we can get it to gravity flow that way and not have to put in another lift station. So the estimate is for a gravity sewer line all the way from the west end and a water line connecting the two. The estimate on that is 1.16 million. So your total estimate, depending on which way you go, is somewhere between four and a half, five and a half million dollars. I also separated out the drainage because of the assumption that the drainage utility department would fund the drainage aspect of it, so I assume you'd want to see the difference there. The drainage, if you just broke that out of either of the two estimates for the street that we first looked at, the 36 and the 24-foot, you'd be deducting about $625,000. So when you're looking at budgeting for the improvement, that portion could be allocated. Happy to go back to any of those, that's pretty much the gist of it, it's pretty straightforward. There's no, because we've got a single landowner and not a lot of existing facilities in the area, there's not a right-of-way issue, there's not acquisition that would have to occur compared to going down a major city thoroughfare. There's not a lot of encumbrance that we would have to deal with, so it's pretty straightforward. Your timing on this, probably, if you indicated that you want to move forward with design, you're probably about two months on design. It's relatively simple compared to other projects we've done. Somewhere between probably eight and 12 months of construction time. So you're a year, give or take, maybe a little over when you consider the bidding aspect of it. Are there any questions?
I do have a couple of questions. On the water and sewer improvement page, you had an eight-inch water line. Would we need to do anything bigger for the water line? And then my next question, because I'm kind of doing a leading question on that, is we have residents in the southwestern part, and we have that water tower over there, would that be something we would look to try to do connectivity to that as well?
So, second part of the question first, yes. That would make a connection. You would connect an existing, actually connect your 12, but it would really, for a short segment, then would connect up to a 6 that comes from that tower and then connect up to an eight-inch on the other side. So I guess the answer to the first part of that question kind of depends on how much you want to put into preparing for future. You do have a 12 that runs down the interstate, and so you're probably, if we were going to look at a model and put in a bunch of demand on that side, the eight-inch probably would be sufficient because you had the 12 feeding it from both directions and it's looped. So it would, and your city, the extent of your ability to expand is just south of this location. So the likelihood that you would exceed an eight would be extremely high.
Thank you.
Hey Derek, a quick question on the, because of the historical significance of Bankhead Highway and anything like that, is there any kind of historical guidelines that we need to follow as far as construction, things like that, the route, all that stuff? I want to make sure we're ahead of that, just in case.
So the only, the only reason that would come into play is if you were using state or federal dollars to build it? Like the Texas Historical Commission, for instance, might put money into it if you chose to go that route? That's totally different discussion, but you would have to apply for it, they would have to approve it. They generally don't fund street projects, but that would only come into play if that money was being used for the project.
Got you. I didn't know if, like, you know, I know down Bankhead, like, at the end where I'm at, you know, there's a box and it's got pictures of the old-timey cars and stuff that were on it, you know, at the time and everything else like that. on it, you know, at the time and everything else like that. I didn't know if it was significant enough to create that same kind of historical value down that, to receive maybe some fundings to help kind of cover some of the significant costs. I mean, $4 million is tremendous ask for us to be able to do that. But again, if we have some kind of historical significance attached to it.
It's certainly worth asking the question. You know, the Texas DOT and the Texas Historical Commission come to mind. Historical Commission, to my knowledge, generally do not fund projects of that size. I mean, they're much lower dollars you're talking about. Texas DOT might be a more likely option. I don't know if with their budgeting situation that they have money to put into it, but it's certainly worth asking.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
What are some potential funding mechanisms for this as we're looking at straight? Debt options here? Is there state, county? I know Scott was kind of getting into a little bit on the historical side, but...
And there's that possibility. I would not want to give you the impression that I think that's a strong possibility. It's probably not. But for a street project, especially of this size, there's not a lot out there outside of issuing bonds locally. The COG, the North Central Texas Council of Governments, has at times the ability to make funds available for transportation projects. They tend to look at larger thoroughfare, you know, highway-type projects. It might be worth approaching them. Texas DOT is another option. There are other ways Texas DOT could potentially put money into it. It's just, you know, they have Safera School, they have other access-type things to the interstate, like if you're accessing the interstate, which we would be in this case. But just to be completely honest, those are probably not terribly likely. But those are the options. There's not like, for a utility project, as you know, for the wastewater plant, there's state funds that they regularly put into this kind of thing. They don't do that with streets. There's just not a program out there for that. I think it might be worth approaching Texas DOT and having some preliminary discussions with them and see what they might think is available.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Do we actually do? And forgive me if you're not the right person to go to on this, but with, we have our Squaw Creek meeting to discuss roads there as well. Is these, is it something that could be done jointly if we were to seek funds at the same time for projects both north and south? Or is this something you think operates independently? Is it something that the city has to pick and choose from? Or can we do both projects simultaneously? Kind of speak to your knowledge based on that.
Well, so, I mean, the easy answer to that is it's money, right? It just depends on whether you have the funds available or the ability to issue bonds to do it. You know, you're talking about in the neighborhood of an 11, $12 million project if you combine the two. Certainly, you know, there's a case to be made both ways, whether, from a construction standpoint, whether you do it simultaneously or individually. On the one hand, you know, multiple contracts leads to additional red tape headache, those types of things, multiple contractors that you have to deal with. Doing one contract, you have another issue of them allocating manpower to get the entire thing done. So you might wind up having these things done one after the other regardless, just because of the way contractors likely to do it. But you could probably make a little bit of a case that you would have some economy of scale. You would attract some larger contractors that would probably give you better unit pricing if you did it as one contract. But, you know, on balance, it's probably not a lot different one way or the other. It probably has more to do with, you know, what your bonding capacity is and whether it's, and I would think there's probably some efficiency from that standpoint of getting the bondage viewed and getting it all done. Hopefully that...
Yeah, thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, councilors, are there a motion? Okay. Do we have any motion to accept and agree to the items outlined in the letter of intent between the City of Willow Park and Mr. Scott Ryder to construct the Bankhead a realignment Okay, no motion from the council?
I'd say more discussion tonight. I'm not sure that there's anything I'm ready to make an action on until we have some of these funding mechanisms in place, we have more figured out. So I'm grateful that all the preliminary stuff is in place.
Would we, just a point of information, would we want, has legal looked at the letter of intent to see if we're okay to sign it?
So I'm generally, yes, and I think you legally could sign it, but I think the concerns are well-founded that perhaps we need some more specifics on funding before the council would want to go forward with signing that.
Agreed.
Okay, so we're moving on. We're moving on to five. Discussion and action to adopt an ordinance for the adoption of the City of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year 2025 through 2026. Do we have Mr. Grimes in the room? Okay. It's here. Okay. Okay, yeah, his name is on here to present. I need to sign this one. When? With this?
Um, no.
Okay, I'll look at that. Thank you.
Do we have a budget?
We have a budget.
Okay. Can you go over some of the details for us?
Yes, sir.
Are you going to present, Brian?
I was just told you had a question about the budget. What would you like to know about?
That you were going to provide the comments on this item on item five. It's got your name on it. The taxpayer impact statement, the information. Are you going to go over that?
I do not have my tablet from you. I thought you only had a question. So the budget is the same. It has not changed since we filed the preliminary budget in July,截止 July 24th, in the staff memo. The taxpayer impact statement is a new statute required by the state of Texas. Anytime you discuss the budget from here on out, you have to put that chart in that graph. It will explain what the tax rate does to the average household value. Your general fund is going to be roughly $4 million bucks. 2.7 of that, just under 2.7, is going to be the police department. You will bring in roughly 1.9 in taxes, and we estimate about 2.2 and change in sales tax. Your sales tax is up from last year, and you are outpacing several cities in Parker County, and you are outpacing the state of Texas.
What was our sales tax number again? I'm so sorry.
2.2.
Thank you, sir.
Is that it?
Y'all have a specific, y'all have a specific question about any particular line item or...
No one?
I do not.
I'll go ahead and make a motion if we're good. I'll move that the City of Willow Park, City Council, adopt an ordinance providing for the adoption of the City of Willow Park municipal budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Second.
This needs to be a record vote?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Need to do a roll call vote.
A roll call vote. Mr. Contras?
Aye.
Mr. Gillian?
Aye.
Mr. Cromwell?
Aye.
Mr. Bright?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, item six, an update on the City of Willow Park pavement management plan. We have Ms. Besquez. Would you come forward to present this item as the engineer for the City of Willow Park
Mayor, council, this agenda item is a continuation of the July 8th presentation where staff provided City Council with an update on the health of our roadway network and the result of the pavement condition survey. Okay, so this next slide is kind of where we are, just an overview, but one before it, Dina? It's an overview of where we are in the process. So the pavement condition assessment, that step has been completed. So a pavement condition survey was performed in January of 2025 on the full city pavement network. The PCI calculations, that next step, it's also completed. Each roadway was surveyed and scored on a scale of 0 to 100, where 0 represents a completely failed pavement and 100 represents a pavement that is in perfect condition. On the budget analysis and report, IMS gave us a report, is included in the packet. It contains a detailed analysis of the results obtained from the pavement condition survey, budget scenarios, and data charts. Our presentation tonight will focus on the budget models. Further discussions with council will be needed to help determine expectations for roadway maintenance and identify funding. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this slide shows the distribution of pavement condition for the roadway network in Willow Park. The overall network pavement condition index, the PCI score for the city was 68. Backlog was 8%. Next slide. Okay, so this slide shows the PCI for various budget levels. Okay, I'm going to try to explain what all those lines mean. So the do nothing or no funds allocated for street maintenance, that's the black line that you see, it shows a significant decrease in the network PCI if we do nothing to fix our streets or maintain our streets. The Willow Park budget or current funding level, that's the green line that you see, that again represents the city's current budget of $155,000 a year, which is dedicated to pavement preservation and rehabilitation. This level of funding will result in a network average PCI score of 61 and a backlog of around 14% after five years. The dashed purple line, it's the backlog control budget, okay? If we restrict that backlog to 10%, we're at 8%. But if we were to restrict it to 10%, you can see that there's going to be a decrease in the PCI to 64 after five years. Okay? The solid purple line, that's the PCI control model. It shows that the PCI would be at 65. The budget to maintain that PCI control would be 1.09 million a year. The backlog would be 9% after five years. If we maintain the current backlog, that would be the dashed red line, then the budget would be 1.3 million a year and the PCI would be 66 after five years. The steady state, which is the solid red line, okay, that would keep the PCI at around 68, which is what we have. And the budget to keep that PCI at 68 would be 1.9 million per year. The backlog would decrease to 4% after five years. The fix-all budget would be the blue line, and that's the funding that's required to fix or maintain all city streets. Next slide. So this slide, just another way of looking at the data. It shows the anticipated PCI in five years relative to the different yearly budget allocation. Next slide. One before that one?
One before that one, sorry.
So this one's just like the previous slide, but instead of plotting the average PCI score, it displays the total backlog after five years with a blue diagonal line. Another comparison of the post-rehab condition of the city's network. The red bars show the current network condition. The blue bars show the projected condition in five years.
And then the next slide here, I went ahead and got with Derek and basically just put a fix-all budget together or pricing together for all remaining streets that have not been touched. And I just have it broke down in phases one through three, and they're basically designated in areas of the city. And as you see on the packet, the fix-all, complete reconstruction of these roads on phase one, which is Appaloosa, Aspenwood, Woodbridge, around the Foxhunt area and around the Old City Hall area, is 9.3 million to completely do that phase. And then I've also included cost of replacing the water infrastructure and sewer infrastructure in those areas. Just to have those numbers there present, just because it's typically easier to fix everything altogether versus trying to come in in phases and tear existing infrastructure up. And then that's phase one. Then phase two is the fairway, north face area, center portion going north, and that is at 8 million, a little over 8 million for complete reconstruction of those roads as well. And then the water is 5.2. There's no sewer up there, so that's not needed. And then phase three is around the far north, around Indian Camp, Vista Hook, that area up there, all the way through White Settlement. And that is, there is some portions on here that are in the city limits and that are not, and they're shown on there. And that one is 9.4 million, a little over that, to completely reconstruct those. And then the water is a little bit of a doozy, is 22.3, but that's where a lot of our main infrastructure is from the beginning when town started. That's where our main hub of ground storage is, where our office is. And that number could be brought down some upon reengineering because there's a lot of old lines that are still active that can be swapped out.
Chase, can I ask you a question on those? Not to just throw you off on your pace here, but...
No, you're good.
On any one of these phases, obviously, your expertise is, especially in our water systems and everything else like that, in phases one, two, and three, like what are our current conditions as far as, I mean, are there some lines that we can leave? Like, kind of give me that breakdown. Like, I understand it would be nice to be able to go in and just revamp everything, put new stuff in. But you know more than any, I mean, you've dug every hole, you've seen every line, so...
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you. But there are some areas, like the phase two area, those areas could probably just have services replaced versus the mains. I mean, the mains are still pretty old, but they're newer than some of the others. And a lot of those services are over there are copper, which we're in the process of having to phase out over time with EPA and the state. So that's going to have to get done either way. Time frame is still in the air. But phase one, really, there's not a whole lot, and there's a lot of... But Phase 1, really, there's not a whole lot, and there's a lot of undersized mains in here as well.
Yeah.
There's a lot of 2-inch water mains that feed a lot of these streets, so there's no fire suppression, there's no fire hydrants, no, nothing out there.
Yeah, and a 2-inch shared lawn is.
Yeah, and it's so, this price shows replacing those and upsizing those and bringing those up for water volume, which also will bring fire protection to those areas.
I was gonna say, we had that conversation when we were riding around, you know, we noticed the north end of town, minimal fire suppression in that area, so.
Any other questions?
No, yeah, you did. Thanks.
Is that it? No more discussion? Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, Gretchen.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're on to number 7. Discussion and action to consider approval of the utility fee ordinance 923-25 for fiscal year 2025 through '26. Michelle Geiger.
Evening, Council. If you remember, well, some of y'all will remember, three years ago, we had New Gen Solutions come in. They did a great study and plan for us for the next five years. We are now in year three of that, and what you are presenting tonight is the increase in the usage, not the base rate, on the water and an increase in the base rate on sewer and usage. On the water, it's an average of $8 cents per thousand, and on the sewer, it was $1.25 per thousand. We were able to get the sewer fund flush, so we will not have to move money out of water fund sewer. That was one of the requirements we asked them to do. We are to that point. We did go ahead and put in the line items for this coming budget to do that, just in case we had something come up. Y'all have any questions for me?
That, I'm so sorry, Michelle, can you repeat that last? So you talked about a flush, what was the?
Right, so sewer fund was taking money from water.
Yeah.
In order to survive.
Gotcha.
We, one of the things we asked New Gen to do was get us flush, that fund flushed within three years.
I was thinking of physical flush. No, thank you.
Do you have, similar to like our budget and our tax impact statement, would you have something similar that you could say, for a household that uses X amount of water, what ways that you would see, on average, this increase or?
Yeah, I don't, I didn't think about putting together, I'm gonna say, on average, just running through our numbers, I'm gonna say $18 to $20 on water. $25 on sewer.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, is there a motion from the Council?
Do we need to read the ordinance?
Let me read it.
That was just a question, because I didn't see a recommended motion.
Nope, no recommended motion. It's up to y'all, so. Do you wanna make a motion?
Oh, well, I just wanna make sure I don't need to read the ordinance. Fritz, do you know?
Fritz, just read that is okay, or do we need more?
That's fine.
Okay, do you want me to just read that and make a motion?
Okay, I can just make a motion to approve the water and wastewater rates as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, thanks, Michelle. Do you have more?
I got the next one, too.
Look at you. Okay, discussion and action, consider approval of the resolution appointing voting member and alternate to the Fort Worth Water and Wastewater wholesale advisory committee. Okay.
Council, part of being able to purchase water from Fort Worth is we get a seat on the wholesale advisory committee. For the past two years, I have been your voting member and Gretchen has been the alternate, and we are asking that that stay the same with this next budget year as well.
Okay, any discussion on that? How about a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve to keep the two in their current positions.
Second?
Aye, second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
Okay, number 9. And is this one you wanna table? So 9 was the discussion and action to consider approval of the ETJ map for the city of Willow Park, and we were gonna have Ms. Brooklyn present, but Fritz tells me we're gonna table that for now.
So the city attorney's office, and we consulted internally, we'd like to request that that, this item be tabled for now.
Okay, do we need to go ahead and make a motion on that? To vote on that or just table it?
Motion to table the item, if you would.
Okay, do we have a motion to table the item?
Make a motion to table item 9, discussion and action item.
And second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we're moving on. 10. Discussion and action, consider an ordinance denying the proposed change in rates of Encore Electric Delivery Company. As we discussed earlier, the Council already denied the proposed change in the rates on July 28th, so the Council needs to approve this ordinance. Dina, do you have anything else to add?
No.
No? Okay, so Council is our motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 924-25 to deny the proposed change in rates of Encore Electric Delivery Company.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. 11. Discussion and action to consider approval of a resolution to submit candidate director nominations for Parker County Appraisal District for terms expiring December 31st, 2025. Dina, can you please provide some details on this item?
Yes, ma'am. The appraisal district is governed by a board of nine directors, and of those five directors are appointed by the taxing units that participate in the district in the manner prescribed in the Texas Property Tax Code. The current terms of two appointed directors will expire on December 31st of 2025, so the chief appraiser will administer selection process as required. The directors with terms expiring December 31st, 2025 are Richard Barrett and Jerry Durant. The city of Willow Park has a total of 22 votes that can be used as all to one nominee or split between them. The action needed for this meeting will be to nominate a candidate. Voting will occur at a later date, so this will come back on a future agenda, probably in October, and ballots will be sent to us for us to vote at that time. So the motion would need to be that we would approve the resolution and name someone as your nominee so that we can send this back into the appraisal district, so that they can compile everything together and to send us back the ballots that will be used for voting in October.
So our motion now is to hold off until October?
No, your note, your motion now would be to nominate a candidate, either Mr. Barrett or Jerry Durant, or you can say you want to put, you have 22 votes that are for Willow Park. The Parker County Appraisal District compiles all that based on our tax base and things like that. So you can either split that and put both of them down as a nominee with like 11 and 11 or 20 and 2, or however you wish to do it. Whatever you do, we just need to, we need to nominate, so the resolution would pass to nominate whomever with however many votes. And then we send that back to Parker County. I will compile that together and put it with the resolution, send that back to them tomorrow, and they will compile that information based on everybody in Parker County as to who the top candidates are. And then at that point, they will send us back a ballot that will be acted upon probably in mid to late October for you to vote based on who the top candidates are.
Gotcha.
So it's a selection process at this point right now.
And both of them represent now, correct?
Yes, yes.
And both of them are split 11 and 11 currently?
Well, no, I mean, you have a total of 22 votes. You can split it however you wish, or you can vote all 22 to one person, just however, that's up to the Council, however you wish to do it.
What is their current voting?
Um, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that information. But this happens every two years, and so I did not go back and look. I apologize for that.
You're fine. I just, I didn't know if it was already split to begin with and would make a motion to continue.
No, it's just, I mean, I've worked for other cities in Parker County, and sometimes it's been split between one or two candidates, or all goes to one candidate. It's just basically left to the Council.
Gotcha.
How you wish to do that. So basically, we're just nominating someone that, with your amount of votes, we're nominating candidates to be considered at a ballot at a later date in October for the appraisal district.
So are we keeping the same two, or you're saying that we can move on?
You're, well, the two that are expiring are those two listed, so that's Mr. Richard Barrett and Mr. Jerry Durant.
Right.
So that's Council's choice, if they wish to choose one candidate, or if they wanna do both and split the ballot, I mean, the number of votes.
Are both willing to serve again?
That's the directors with terms expiring are, so.
So we don't know that answer?
No, you can nominate one person now or two people, or both persons.
So do we have any other discussion on that? Any motions on that?
Sean, would you like to reach out to them first before we?
I can.
Move forward with it, just to make sure, I don't wanna nominate somebody that's not willing to continue participating.
What's our deadline again? October?
Um, let's see. Says the law requires chief appraiser to administer the selection process as outlined below. Voting entitlement before October 1, chief appraiser notifies the taxing units to participate in selection process. Deadline before October 15th requires action from taxing unit. They submit its director nominations by resolution. So our next meeting is scheduled for October 14th. So I guess technically you could push it to that and for further investigation, if that's what you would like to do, but.
I'm happy to reach out, it's up to you guys.
Okay, so do we wanna wait and do that October 14th?
Dina, is that pushing it too?
Well, so the next step after the nomination deadline is October 15th, so we would have to get it in that day for sure. If we hit me up on the 14th, the 15th, it has to be turned into them.
Does that meet our guidelines?
But the ballots would be, it says before October 30.
Okay.
So, yeah, and our, I don't, I'm sorry, I don't know the date of our next meeting, but you know, we could vote, it would be on that next Council agenda in October.
We're willing to just split the votes for tonight, it gives equal to each party, it gives us time to look into it as well, that way we can make a motion now, and then voting will have time when both candidates.
Can we make that change on the 14th then, if we do that? I mean, provide it some.
I mean, you're okay if you wanna wait until the October 14th meeting, we should be fine. I don't think that's gonna be an issue. We can send it in on that next morning, I can email it to them, so I don't think that's a problem. And then the actual ballot would be for the next meeting in October, two weeks later, which is gonna be before the 30th.
Okay.
I think you should be fine, right?
We're okay with the motion on that?
Yeah.
I'll reach out to both and respond back to you and back to you, Mayor. Email and let you know. Can we, can we learn what their current split is too in that process?
Yes, I will investigate that and see where we are, where, when this happened. This typically happens every two years.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That'd be great, thank you so much.
I will check on that, I apologize for not getting that.
Just move on.
Thank you.
Been a little crazy in my office, I'm sorry, trying to play catch-up here. I will definitely get that information for you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dina.
You're very welcome.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the executive session. In accordance with the Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, Subchapter D, the City Council will recess into executive session to discuss items 12 through 13 under the following Texas Open Meeting Act exceptions. Item 12, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney, 551.072, deliberation regarding real property, I 20, or 120, El Chico Trail lease agreements. 13 is Section 551.071, consultation with the city attorney. Section 551.087, economic development negotiations, Beldin development. The time now is 8:48, and the Council will now recess into executive session. Okay. Okay, we're back in open session, the time is 9:17. To reconvene, do we have, Council, is there any motion on 12 through 13?
No action.
No action? Okay, so we're gonna move on. 15. Discussion and action on possible engagement of a search firm such as SGR for interim city manager services. I didn't request this item, but here it is, and it looks like we need to talk to SGR, so I talked to them this afternoon. I've talked to them several times, but I talked to them this afternoon, and they have a lot of options for us to take care of our city manager, that they have interim city managers, other cities have used that are close by, so that is an option, to talk to SGR and continue discussions with them. Do y'all have any discussions on that, that y'all wanna talk about?
Would we like to try to have Tony be our interim city manager while we're working through this?
First, let's ask Tony, are you willing and able to, certainly not to be put on the spot, but absolutely on the spot now?
Or just think about it?
I believe what Council wishes.
Well, he's here through August, y'all put him here through October 10th, right? So October 10th, he's still here.
So if I find interim services contract by October 10th, right?
Yeah. I mean, SGR has 600 city managers sitting and waiting.
We're gonna have to go through an interview process, though, and.
Yeah.
May I say, just one thing, may I say, that might help clear this up, too? The city attorney contacted me a week ago and told me to put the wording on the agenda exactly as it was at the last meeting, so that was the reason why it was added to this agenda, even though you didn't do it, but that was advised by the attorney's office.
Okay.
To do it that way, so that's the reason the wording was on there, same as it was for September 9th, per day.
So I'll continue to talk to SGR to see what options they have for close by opportunities for us?
I'd like to be included on those conversations as well, please.
Perfect.
Email me or put me on the call.
Okay, so we have one specific person that has ideas for us that, that I've heard from.
Okay.
So we'll do that.
Do you have a, any cost analysis or what you could give us, provide us in the meantime?
No, we haven't moved to that next step yet.
Okay, I didn't know if you'd done any pricing.
I've just talked to other cities that have used them.
Okay.
And that's all. So they wanna, they wanna meet in person to talk about that, so we can set that appointment up in Fort Worth, for them to use in Fort Worth. So do we have a motion to, for Nathan and I to check that out with SGR?
Do we need a motion for that?
You don't need a motion, it's.
So just go ahead? Okay, we're good. All right, so we have city manager comments. Is the city manager still in the building? Anybody know?
Don't believe so.
Okay, so we don't have any city manager comments. We have city council comments.
I do. First and foremost, and I would ask that this be added to an agenda item as well for a formal apology to Dr. Kirbin. I was raised with morals and ethics and integrity, and I hate that that was questioned tonight by several members of our community. So again, I would like to formally apologize to Dr. Kirbin. It's, it was a unprovoked act. I am a graduate from Toastmasters, and that is a, what's called a nervous ploy, to take away the nervousness is by asking that question, she relaxes. But again, completely understand if it was under, if it was determined something, it definitely is not me, it's not my. it definitely is not me, it's not my character, it's not who I am. So again, I would like to have that added as a formal apology to Dr. Kirbin in whatever format I need to do. The other scenario of being questioned, if I had given Mr. Wright the questions prior, I will fully take a lie detector test. I hate, again, that my integrity was questioned in that comment for that. But again, everybody can make their own assumptions of what takes place and what doesn't take place. But again, I will apologize for that scenario, that is simply not the case. I will always be upfront forward. If you know who I am, that's just where I come from. So my sincerest apologies now, I know this is being recorded, but again, I would like to have an agenda item as a formal apology in that scenario.
Okay, Deana, you've got that noted?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Any other city council comments? Okay, so I'd like to say with the departure of Brian Grimes, it's my hope that this community and our staff can heal. I was elected as mayor and was not going to simply sit down and stay quiet. I've been forced into a criticism that I did not deserve. I am committed to serving the public in my role as an active mayor. I don't feel that I have to apologize for winning this election, and I will not. Can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I move we adjourn. I'll second.
Lots of seconds, everybody's ready to go home. Okay, all in favor? Okay, meeting is adjourned at 9:23.
And we're back.